... which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. So I have a friend with me this evening. This is Patty Mancini. She is going through the Verdi Valley Leadership Program. She part of the program. It's like a 16-year program now, I believe, and it trains up leaders in our great Verdi Valley. So she's going through the program. I believe the vice mayor as well went through that program. Former mayors have Diane Jones and others. It's a good program. Part of the program is to shadow a leader in the area. So she chose to shadow me this evening, and I promised her a benign agenda. The work we have should last us about 20 minutes, but I know we'll be here for a little bit listening to Call of the Public. So anyway, she'll be here sitting with me. Is there anything you'd like to say? I'll just let everyone know that you work for the town of Camp Verdi. You are the stormwater specialist, and you've been in the area for a long time now. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to thank you all for allowing me to sit in. I look forward to any, anything I can glean from what you have to say, what the council has to say, and I look forward to future service for all of our Verdi Valley area.
Great, thank you. All right, council members, anything else to report this evening?
I had...
Go right ahead.
Just one quick regarding Lahaina and Maui, just to send our good thoughts and prayers for everyone there. Lots of lives have been changed.
Thank you.
I would just like to emphasize to the community that you can access all our city codes and meeting minutes on the city website if you want to examine past procedures and see how they've gone in comparison to the notable distinctions from last Tuesday. And I'd also like to, if anyone would like to canvass for signatures or get signature sheets for the mayoral recall, please let me know.
Anything else, council members? No. All right, Mr. Manager, Scotty Douglas?
In the past, and now what we're doing is we're really taking an opportunity now to start covering certain topics. This next meeting will be introducing Tricia Lewis, and she's going to go over our economic development strategy path that we're going to be taking going forward and as we develop our next version of our economic development strategy for the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is Call of the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion, and/or action and comments are limited to a three-minute time period. So standing room only. Right now, we've got folks lined up outside as well. The recreation center was booked a long time ago, so it wasn't an option for our meeting this evening. We did anticipate a crowd, and I apologize to folks that are outside. What I'm going to do is what I do all the time during this Call of the Public is I'll queue up folks, you know, probably two, I'll probably do three deep at this point. If you have a friend or colleague that's outside, if there's some way you could let them know that they're queued up, that would be helpful for us. Try to be as non-disruptive as possible as you go in and out. Just, these chambers aren't really adequate for chambers, frankly. So the noise is hard when it comes in off the street. So please remember to shut that door thoroughly when you come back in. But if you have friends out there, please let them know that they're queued up. As well as, when you come up and you've said your three minutes, feel free to leave and make room for others to come in and sit down. This is being televised as well, so you're more than welcome to watch it from the comfort of your own home. And please remember to direct your comments to all of council without singling out any particular council member. I'd appreciate that very much. And remember to address us directly and not to address the crowd behind you. As you know, we cannot reply to you at all. This isn't a conversation. It's not meant to be a conversation. There are other ways to engage your council, however, by email or other means. So with that, I ask for everyone to be patient as we work through this, and respectful to one another, and respectful to council. So Erica Christensen, you'll be up, followed by Garen Marshall, and maybe Gavin Marshall, and Jen Richards. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Erica. I'm here because my family attended that drag show on April 8th, and I just wanted to express that I'm deeply disturbed by all the people that are here to talk about the drag show and whether or not it's appropriate for children, and not the armed white nationalists, Proud Boys, and neo-Nazis who comfortably protested on the main streets of Cottonwood that day and made us deeply scared for our child's safety. That day, our child, and it was her birthday that day, we heard someone talk about how there were kids onstage with drag queens. That was our kid. It was her sixth birthday, and they brought her up to sing "Happy Birthday." It really made her day. She made a sign all by herself. She used leftover poster board from school. She did the markers, gathered everything, all the materials, wrote it herself, and it was what she wanted to say to the protesters, and here it is. She said, "Boo! Boo for you! And yay for drag. I love drag. It's my birthday, so come on, on my sixth birthday? Really? I'm only six, but I'm strong and powerful." When we got to the show and saw the protesters, we told her she couldn't bring her sign. We didn't want to provoke these people who were there solely to intimidate us with the threat of violence, and she was really upset. She wanted to express herself, and we censored her for her own safety. And frankly, we regret that. The lesson she learned is that intimidation and hate won. And we thought about whether to invite her to speak today and decided against it for the same reason, and will probably regret that too. But we still don't trust that this is a safe place for her to express herself. We hope that horrifies the members of this committee as much as it horrifies us. Thank you.
All right, Garvin, Garen, I'm sorry, I butchered the name, Marshall, followed by Jen Richards, followed by Shada Sine.
Noble effort on the names.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Garen, Erica's husband. We live nearby and came to the drag performance on April 8th. As Erica said, we brought our daughter. I think she was probably the only kid there. We had a great time once we got through the doors. Inside, the audience and the performers were kind and warm to our family. Outside, there were men in Proud Boy outfits with white nationalist flags flashing white power hand signals at me. Next to them were old folks made with handmade signs, some of which had Bible verses. All of these people, the drag performers inside, the Proud Boys, and the folks with religious messaging outside, have their expression protected under the First Amendment, okay? But you don't see anyone suggesting the city council should legally prevent those people from expressing themselves. If the ordinance you want passed is anything like those referenced in the working meeting in Tennessee, it would chill protected speech and expression, and so it would be blatantly unconstitutional. And you don't have to take my word for it. A Trump-appointed federal judge just struck down this very type of law in Tennessee in June, finding that it was unconstitutional. That's it. That's the ballgame. This effort relies on the idea that drag is inherently obscene, that drag performers aren't capable of doing a drag show that is appropriate for my kid. That's because some people believe that drag performers and queer people are obscene by nature. But not only is this wrong, it's discriminatory, and the city should not enshrine discrimination. You don't just get to ban things you don't like or agree with, and you don't get to tell me I can't bring my kid to them. That's not how this works. Whether I like it or not, you're welcome to hold signs outside drag shows. You can yell terrible things at people going into them. You can stand shoulder to shoulder with armed men draped in symbols of misogyny and hatred. You get to do all of that thanks to the same right that allowed the people inside to perform. All I know is that if I have to choose which side of those doors my kid should be on, I'm picking the fun, love-filled room with kind people lip-syncing in dresses every single time, every time. Thank you.
Okay, Jen Richards, you're up next, followed by Shada Sine.
Located at the center of Cottonwood lies approximately 3 million tons of copper mining waste called slag. In 2008, a company called Mineral Research expressed interest in reprocessing the slag by crushing it into a fine particulate dust and selling it. Numerous city council meetings and planning and zoning meetings took place where the proposed slag-crushing operation was discussed. The main citizen concerns were over toxicity of the slag when crushed into a dust and breathed in. Mineral Research owner and authorized representatives responded to citizen concerns at these meetings by stating their company had been conducting a similar operation in Aho for the last 15 years. They've had no complaints from property owners because they collect and sell the dust, so the operation does not create a dust issue for neighbors. The safety was proven, and copper slag dust poses no health risks. They have never received a citation from the Department of Environmental Quality in their 15 years of operating in Aho. After my child began experiencing rashes and asthma after playing at the Cottonwood Children's Park, I began a citizen investigation into Mineral's research and the toxicity of slag particulate I noticed at the playground. A records request I put in Aho revealed that, at the time Mineral Research claimed here on record that they'd never received a dust complaint in Aho, they had 14 complaints, and so many complaints that a town meeting was called relating to the toxic slag dust blanketing the town, where the Department of Environmental Quality had forwarded all the complaints to Mineral Research. So council was lied to, and Mineral Research said here on record that no complaints had ever been filed against them. I also put a records request in with the Pima Department of Environmental Quality, which revealed approximately nine notices of environmental violations, so much so that the PDEQ actually sued Mineral Research several times for dust contaminations and emissions, in which way they were required to pay large fines, and were distinguished as a high-priority violator. So the commission was lied to again on record when Mineral Research stated they had never received a single violation from PDEQ. Multiple studies in the National Library of Medicine prove that copper slag dust can permanently damage lungs after a single inhalation and cause lung tumors and cancers. Mineral Research's own material data safety sheet states that a hazard, a health hazard may occur through inhalation of the dust, that the exposure levels of harmful chemicals like arsenic, barium, lead, mercury, and more can exceed regulations, recommends anybody in contact with it use a respirator, notes that arsenic is found in the slag particulate in levels that exceed allowable limits, and there's a warning that says the product contains chemicals known to cause cancer and birth defects and other reproductive harm. A citizen-funded environmental report that I have proves that the slag dust is disseminating throughout Cottonwood. I have located slag dust in the Cottonwood Kids Park, the library, the rec center, the Cottonwood Elementary School, and many other locations throughout the city. The toxic effects are cumulative and permanent. I have compiled a comprehensive oversight report of everything that has taken place in this situation and the many violations of law and harm to the human health of the citizens in Cottonwood and our children. I ask this council to please make this an agenda item, or make a special meeting where we can discuss what has happened in the violation of laws to protect human health. Thank you very much.
Shada Sine, and I'm really sorry, I know I'm not doing a good job of that. You'll be followed by William Donovan, and then Randy Burdette.
Hi, my name is Shada Sina. I'm a physician here in Cottonwood. About one month ago, I was contacted by a colleague and asked me if I had any patients that were having cancer and autoimmune. And I said, yes, I've had a large amount of cancer patients and autoimmune patients since 2015. I asked him why, and he said, "Did you know that the slag pile in Cottonwood was being refined?" I said, "I don't know what you're talking about." And he goes, "Well, they're actually refining the slag pile." And I came to a meeting, and I was given a sample from an ill patient. I have a specialty in environmental medicine, so I took the specimen and sent it into my lab that I test for heavy metals and chemicals. There's high amounts of iron, silica, zinc, arsenic. The highest of the toxic metals were aluminum. I'm highly concerned because it's right where the HUD housing is, where the playground is, the library is, and many businesses. I would like for us to have an open communication about, talking about what's going on, possibly an investigation on air, water, and the water coming off of the slag pile specifically, and soil. Clarkdale has had soil remediation, we have not. This is a big issue because people are having organic gardens, and they're thinking that they're doing well with eating organic when they're actually possibly having another issue, and they may be one of the causes of why they're developing autoimmune and cancer. I really appreciate the time, and I thank you. I would love to see this on the agenda or a special meeting.
Okay, William Donovan, you're up next, followed by Randy Burdette, followed by John Mitchell.
Hello, council. I guess my mom told me if I was going to offend somebody, I should take my hat off so they can see my face. Anyway, just to start off, last week, I think that thing y'all did was a shit show. That's what I think. Based on the ordinances and how things are supposed to be done, that was just crazy. The other thing, question I have is, this law firm that is defending this city, what's their law? What are they doing law in? You're taking their word for constitutional law? I just was curious what their law is in. I mean, I'll give you some examples. The First Amendment is limited to children and has been ruled on by the appellate courts and the Supreme Court on numerous occasions. Just think about it. Kids go to school, they can't wear a shirt that says Budweiser. They can't wear, and that's either freedom of speech or it's freedom of expression. It's both. Kids can't wear bathing suits to school. Kids have to wear uniforms if you tell them to. It tells you right there that kids do not have the same First Amendment right as adults. That's exactly what it is. And if you look at case law, which your lawyer should have done, if they look at case law, they'll see that that is not the case. It's different for adults than it is for kids. The other part is the parental law. Let's take that for a second. Most of that law was based on schools. Most of it was based on parents making decisions in the best interest of their children, not what they think their children should be doing. I'll give you an example. If I had a 14-year-old kid and I said, "You know what? I'd get tired of driving you to school every day. There's a car, you go drive the damn thing." I'm a parent, I should be able to do that, right? That's parental law, right? But I'll be, damn, there's a law in there. He can't do it, right? So obviously, there are laws that take away parental rights. So this whole thing with parental rights and the First Amendment, you guys have been sold a lard of crap. That's what you were sold, unless you can find some more proof. But I guarantee you, if you look at case law, you're going to find out that you're not right. And let me just read you something before I run out of time. Arizona Department of Child Safety, it says, "Sexual abuse. The National Center for Child Abuse and Sexual Neglect defines sexual abuse as the involvement of dependent, developmentally immature children and adolescents in sexual activities that they do not fully comprehend." Do you think those little kids comprehend that stuff? There's no way in hell. Also, "to which they are unable to give informed consent..." So mama says you're going, you can't say, "Hell no, I don't want to go, because mama's going to make you," or "that violates the social taboos of family roles." Are you telling me that it's taboo to take your kid to a sex show of any kind, whether they're doing that or not, but that's what it actually entails? Anyway.
Randy Burdette, you're up next, followed by John Mitchell, followed by Eleanor Kirk.
Last Tuesday, the mayor said that having age restrictions on adult-themed shows was discriminatory, and some council members said it violated parental rights, leaving me and others with many questions. Is it really a parent's right to take children to shows where adult entertainers dance for them? Performers and entertainers who mostly or all of the time hold adult-oriented lewd and lascivious shows means they are adult entertainers. How are drag queens and drag shows any different since they mostly perform in lewd and lascivious shows as a group? Why are they the only type of adult entertainer allowed to perform for children? Sounds to me like this is an issue of power dynamics and bias rather than rights. Drag, especially in recent times, has taken on more of a sexualized tone. Here's a summary of a paper written by supporters of the queer community and a drag queen called Little Miss Hot Mess in 2021 called "Drag Pedagogy." This article, written collaboratively by an education scholar and a drag queen involved in organizing Drag Queen Story Hour, provides a generative extension of queer pedagogy into the world of early childhood education. Drawing on the work of Jose Esteban Muniz, who is a queer theorist and Marxist, the authors discuss five interrelated elements of the DQSH. Ultimately, the authors propose that drag pedagogy provides a performative approach to queer pedagogy that is not simply about LGBT lives but living queerly. In other words, drag and drag pedagogy is meant to teach children on how to live queerly. According to Planned Parenthood, queer is a word that describes sexual and gender identities other than straight and cisgender. In earlier meetings, I have mentioned how a drag queen called Trixie Mattel outlined how drag will always have its roots in queer culture. Also, here's an interesting fact that coincides with this. Queer theory is based on the founding document written by Gail Rubin, who was a pedophile apologist who supported NAMBLA, the North American Man-Boy Association, Love Association. So you see, drag isn't based on the weird, innocent fun, as some people have put it. It is sexual in nature in this day and age, which isn't appropriate for children. Also, why have you refused to allow this issue to be agendized for so long? This is violating City Code 2.08110. The mayor stated that four members are needed for it and not two, but that isn't what the city code says. Again, I urge the council to agendize the issue and place age restrictions on adult entertainers dancing for children. After 13 calls to the public in a row, about seven months now, I hope we can all have a civil discussion on this issue very soon. Thank you.
Okay, John Mitchell, you're up next, followed by Eleanor Kirk, who'll be followed by Sharon Bonney.
Good evening, John Mitchell. Kind of segue off. Normally, I address the same thing that these folks before me did, but I wanted to address first the city attorney, and then council, and especially the public, so they're aware. Chapter 2.24.010 talks about the powers and duties of the city attorney. The attorney should act as legal counselor and advisor of the council and other city officials, and as such, shall their opinion in writing when requested. They shall draft all deeds and contracts, conveyances, ordinances, resolutions, and other, let's see, other legal instruments when required by the council. They shall approve as to form in writing all drafts, contracts, and all official and other bonds before final approval or acceptance thereof by the council. And especially this, they shall return within 10 days all ordinances and resolutions submitted to them for consideration by the council with his approval, with their approval or disapproval as to the form noted therein, together with the reasons therefore. They shall prosecute and defend or oversee the prosecution and defense of all suits, actions and causes where the city is a party, and shall report to the council, when required, the conditions of any suit or actions to which the city is a party, notwithstanding any other provision of this Title II, and the council may, in its sole and sound discretion, employ, appoint, engage, or contact with one or more Arizona licensed attorneys, law firms, or other public agencies to perform any or all duties of the office of city attorney and any other legal services deemed necessary or appropriate by the council, either by direct contract or appointment, or following such public advertisement and recruitment or bidding process as the council deems appropriate under the circumstances. Thank you.
Eleanor Kirk, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Sharon Bonney, followed by Joseph Giuliani.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Kirk. And Mayor Olinsky, members of the Cottonwood City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the issue of age restrictions for drag queen events in public buildings. I marvel that it has taken six or seven months and this still isn't on the agenda. The delay would seem to indicate that this council gives little importance to protecting our young, which may be the most important issue facing this generation. Are we less intelligent, less courageous, or less devoted than a herd of bison, which will surround their young and battle to the death any predator that attacks them? I trust that this is not the case. Everyone who is making decisions for the people of the Verdi Valley has taken note of the overflow crowds that have turned out repeatedly to voice their dismay at the outrage of allowing minors to attend drag queen events in public buildings. Like us, you have children and grandchildren that you hope will live productive, fulfilled lives. The evidence is clear that the promotion of a gay lifestyle is not conducive to their health or happiness. According to an NIH study, suicide rates among lesbians, gays, and bisexuals is three to six times greater than heterosexuals. Fully transitioned transgenders commit suicide 19 times more than heterosexuals. Promoting gender confusion is a predatory attack on the young and society as a whole. Promoting gender confusion is a predatory attack on the young and society as a whole. Social order is based on the family unit. Gender confusion creates, sorry, and is an attack on the family unit and the creator God who established the family unit, creating male and female. We now know that the prefrontal cortex of the human brain is not fully developed until well into the twenties. Until then, children are ruled by emotions linked to past experience. It is our job as mature adults to protect our vulnerable young from damaging experiences and the horrific emotions they evoke. We need to draw a protective circle around our children and defend them, heed the warnings of those who have been transitioned, listen to those who have abandoned the gay lifestyle, make the city of Cottonwood a safe place for our young to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Sharon Bonney, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Joseph Giuliani, followed by Michael Nocido.
Good evening. Right below where the mayor is sitting is a plaque. That is the great seal of the state of Arizona. On it is inscribed our state's motto, "Ditat Deus," Latin for God and riches. First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." That means government can't make us practice religion, nor can it stop us. The mayor knows this because he participated in the National Day of Prayer on May 4 at the police station. We may hear some religious talk this evening. The U.S. Constitution protects the right to speak about religion. The city code states that the number of council members to agendize an item is two. Last week, Mayor Olinsky blocked two council members from agendizing the item of limiting the age of drag show attendees. Who on the council will call him out? Do any of the four council members who agree with the mayor's personal stance that children should be able to attend drag shows, do any of them have the integrity to put the government process over their personal opinion and call out the mayor for his illegal blocking of an agenda item? Who on the city council has the integrity to follow the government process? Under our constitution, people have the right to peacefully assemble and the freedom of speech. I support LGBT rights, and I support children's rights. Children have a right to a period of innocence, a time when sexuality and gender confusion are not presented to them by adults. The role of the adult to children is to give them a period of innocence. What does family-friendly mean? Will the city council define it? Can any show claim itself family-friendly and be allowed to perform for children? The drag show that came to the Cottonwood Clubhouse was benign, as drag shows go. That was in response to the public having pointed out Miss Nature's previous dance moves and attire, so he cleaned up the act. What might a drag show look like next time without a definition of family-friendly? We saw last week at the city council meeting what other U.S. cities allow as family-friendly. Any of that happening in a child's home, by the way, and the State Department of Children, and the Department of Children's Services goes in to inspect the home and to protect childhood? How do we know what might happen in a Cottonwood drag show without a definition of family-friendly? Dancers funneling their sex organs? Will the city allow that? Putting kids up on a drag show stage and sitting them on a man's lap? Will the city allow that? Would Miss Nature next time be allowed to bring his dancers named Justin Deeper and Navie Ho to dance for the children? How do we know what will be allowed without a definition of family-friendly? In conclusion, I ask that the city council members show integrity in the government process. I ask for a definition of family-friendly, and I ask that children be allowed a period of innocence. Thank you for listening.
Joseph Giuliani, you're up next, followed by Michael Nocido, followed by Nancy McConnelly, I believe.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by expressing my respect and gratitude to the council for your service. I am here to speak about children being included in a drag show here in Cottonwood. I'd like to first say that this item being blocked from the agenda repeatedly makes me wonder if personal opinions are superseding the will of the constituents and the council policy. I appreciate that the last drag show was toned down. I think that's great. But as was just stated, there's no way to know about future drag shows, how it would go if there's no guidelines for family-friendly. And drag shows are usually adult entertainment with sexual themes. I've been to drag shows myself at another phase in my life, and I'll say that it was, they were fun, but under no circumstance would I have children at a drag show. And I'd like the issue not to be confused in that this is not a discrimination issue, nor is it a gay issue. If heterosexual men or women were strutting around, accentuating the buttocks, breasts, doing a spread eagle gesture onstage, I would say that's not for kids. I'd like the council to refer to AZ Law Title 13, Chapter 35, Section 7. That's AZ 13-3507. It is unlawful for any person knowingly to place explicit sexual material upon public display. It defines harmful to minors as means that equality of any description or representation in whatever form of nudity, sexual activity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement. Sexual activity is defined as patently offensive representations or descriptions of ultimate sexual acts, normal or perverted, actual or simulated. So the performance of a spread eagle on a stage to define that would be a performer on their back legs in the air, shaking and accentuating the groin, would definitely fall under the definition as unlawful. It goes on to say that any person who violates any provision of this section is guilty of a Class 6 felony. I'd like to express that that's not just for the performers doing it, but for the folks who knowingly allow it to happen. And I'm not meaning this in a threatening way, because I have a love and concern for the kids, as well as the performers, and as well as you folks, not to be in a position where children are exposed to indecent behavior under your watch. So I see a clear, I don't see this as a parent rights issue. If child protective services came into a home and saw children exposed to explicit material, they're not going to say, well, it's your right to expose them to that. And I see a clear middle road. If there needs to be drag shows in Cottonwood, even on a city building, so be it, but please do not allow children at these shows. I respectfully remind all you folks of your duty to represent the constituents, to follow policy, to protect the innocent, to protect children. My respect and gratitude. Good night.
All right, Mr. Nocido, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Nancy McConnelly, and then Kevin McConnelly, I believe.
Good evening. It's Michael Nocido. Thanks for having me be here. I'm going to bring you two separate council items, issues, that have been historically addressed by the council with two council members as sponsors. The agendas or the items were crafted by the city attorney, or they received public input and were discussed and voted upon by the council, with two council members sponsoring the items. The first one is 2021 Bill of Rights Sanctuary City Resolution. Councilwoman Naren and Councilwoman Kirat were the ultimate sponsors. It was addressed, voted on, and adopted June 1, 2021. The next one dates back to 2016. Mr. Mayor, you were a council member at the time. And the entire council decided to put an age limit on smoking. And so cigarettes were no longer allowed to be sold, possessed, or purchased by 18-year-olds to 21-year-olds. So a 18-year-old who could serve his country and die for it could no longer go out and buy a pack of smokes, because being in possession of that cigarette was going to be a crime. That was a resolution that was presented by Mayor Jones at the time, and Mr. Olinsky was one of the council members, and it was a unanimous vote to pass that. And third is the 2020 mask mandate, a resolution brought to the council by, I believe, councilmember Henry at the time and Mike Matthews. And it was crafted by the attorney, was discussed by the council with community input, and that vote failed, resulting in the mayor taking a dictatorial role and placing a mask mandate on an entire community with an emergency declaration. So if we fast forward to last Tuesday, special session, you continually pressed the issue of four people sponsoring a direction to the council, or to, excuse me, to the city attorney and city manager to draft a resolution, defining drag queen shows as adult entertainment. Nowhere is it stated anywhere in the city code where four people on the council need to be a sponsor. Section 2.08.110 states in Section A, "The mayor may delete and add items to the agenda at his or her discretion, except, except those items specifically requested to be placed on the agenda by two or more council members." When public comment and without public comment, without complete disregard for the position of the representatives Duvernay, Duwillis, and Polisari, you assumed the role and declared that four council members needed to be voting on that, and the other four of you fell in line just like Hitler and the dictator should be at.
Nancy McConnelly, I know I'm not saying it right. You're up next, followed by Kevin McConnelly, and then Scott Murray. No, okay. Scott Murray, are you with us? All right. And then you'll be followed by Mary Murray, who will be followed by Jesse Dowling.
I'd like to preface my comments. We'll not be directed to Steve Duwillis, Lisa Duvernay, or Mr. Polisari. Mr. Mayor and city council members, once our great nation was founded, our once-great nation was founded on godly principles by godly men whom sacrificed their personal safety, professional endeavors, and their fortunes. Our founding fathers had the wisdom and foresight to base the laws of our newfound land on the Ten Commandments, as given by the hand of God to Moses to govern the people. All of our laws are derived from those Ten Commandments, and they were given as moral and spiritual guidelines for all governments to be conducted. Our founding fathers also had the foresight to have three branches of government keep each one in check. They drafted the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, outlining our God-given and denoted those rights in those documents. In case it has slipped your memories, the Constitution begins, "We, the people, and for you that are not astute in the Constitution, we are a republic, not a democracy." In the 1960s, we had civil rights movements, and men and women more principled than yourselves worked to guarantee that all men and women, regardless of color, creed, national origin, or religious beliefs, would all enjoy the same freedoms granted to all by God, the very same God who created each and every one of us. These LGBT groups you foster and promote do not come under those guidelines, because you do not and will not work within the confines of the law of the state of Arizona in the form of ARS codes, the city of Cottonwood laws, and city statutes, the Constitution, or the Bill of Rights, which have all been brought to your attention multiple times. You have shown that the current and varied forms of government held offices of the land are lawless. Since you intend to be leaders, my question is, who are you leading and where are you leading us to? Look around, who's following you? And how will you remain in any form of authority when the bonds of law are regarded by no one? Our children are on out for sale.
Mary Murray?
I stated on that slip that I wasn't speaking.
Okay. Jesse Dowling, you're up next, followed by Debbie Joseph, followed by Nancy Scaringala.
Been a while. Jesse Dowling, Verde Heights, Cottonwood, Arizona. Good evening, mayor and council. I wanted to speak this evening about the ongoing abuse of the call to the public portion of these meetings. Traditionally, this time was set aside for citizens to voice complaints or concerns or request additional information or services. Beginning earlier this year, that changed, and it has since been exploited and subverted into protesting, proselytizing, instigating, threatening, and insulting members of the public, certain council members, and the mayor. While healthy and civil debate is the cornerstone of political process, it has now devolved into a game of numbers, intimidation, influence, and manipulation. Sadly, this is not unique to our city, as activists have identified these calls to the public as an easy target at the soft underbelly of the local political systems. It has been made clear via social media that this tactic will continue to be employed in order to apply pressure to any one of the four seats on the dais that voted against the item that was agendized and discussed at length and then voted on in the last work session, just as it had been requested for months. The circumstances leading up to that meeting are now questionable at best, and at worst, possibly illegal. Social media posts in support of these assaults on the meeting process clearly named three sitting members and alluded to unnamed others. This needs to be made clear. If more than three council members communicated via daisy chain process, that is a clear violation of state open meeting law, and it needs to be investigated. Additionally, myself and others have contacted the city concerning the posting of the work session agenda of the required, far less, far short of the required 24-hour time period. I have been told that the matter is under investigation. Regardless of how this happened, if it was a software glitch, aside from those preferred groups that clearly had advanced knowledge of the meeting and the agenda items, anybody who relied on the city website as a source for accurate and timely information had about 12 hours to organize any attempt at providing some counterbalance to an otherwise very one-sided, packed council chamber. Loading up the room to portray yourself as the majority does not make it so. It is simply one of the oldest forms of political theater. So here we are now, hypocritically standing here, chastising the process while we're using the process. But if it was not, if it was not for the incredible turnout on the other side of this, there would be no reason. So in an eventual race to the bottom, where all that matters is who can apply the most pressure to break one council member, one council member's resolve, or have the most intimidating presence in the room, standing on chairs, conducting the crowd with outstretched arms to rile them up. I fear this vicious cycle will continue, but I sincerely hope that some level of sanity returns to the process before it results in irreverent harm to individuals and a very horrible political process.
Debbie Joseph, you're up next. You'll be followed by Nancy Scaringala. I'm sure I'm getting that wrong, and then Molly Heckman. Debbie Joseph, are you with us? Nancy Scaringala, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay. Scaringala, I'm sorry. I see by my last name, I don't, all right. And then Molly, you'll be followed by Molly Heckman.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Nancy Scaringala, I live in Cottonwood. I've noticed disparate treatment of members in attendance at the public meetings. When people who do not approve of the mayor's agenda and let their approval be known, the mayor just, he just chastises them. Instead of listening, he just disrespects the very people he's supposed to represent, and it appears he has favorites who behave in any manner they choose without redress. And I'm looking at the last meeting that was held. He ignores and sometimes supports his pets, I'll call him that. And this discrimination is obvious, and it needs to stop. That's why I'm here, to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Heckman, you're up next, to be followed by Barbara Pavlovsky.
Hello, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would first like to thank the four of you that voted down the proposed ordinance of last week's work session. I can only imagine how stressful it must have been to be a council member last Tuesday or over the past several months, to be completely honest. I truly want to express my gratitude to you all for consistently upholding the laws governing this country, even if they don't align with your personal beliefs. There are many in this community who see and appreciate your dedication to all of its citizens of Cottonwood, not just the Christian ones. Next, I would like to call attention to the presentation that was used to intentionally mislead the public who attended last week's meeting. The video footage that was shown from the production named "A Drag Queen Christmas," held in Austin, Texas in December 2022. Many in the crowd were under the assumption that this was footage from the Arizona Pride Tour that was here in April. Those who chose to use this footage chose to drive a further wedge between an already divided community, and for that, you should feel shame. There was also false information given. While Tennessee, Florida, Montana, and Texas have all passed bans, a federal judge has permanently blocked these rulings in Tennessee and Florida. A temporary ban was issued in Montana by a federal judge before their 30th Montana Pride event. Arkansas has also recently gutted a ban following other rulings. The judges acknowledged that these laws are unconstitutional. The ACLU of Texas has also filed a lawsuit following the state's ban. These bans are not holding up in court. Cottonwood will be no different, as I believe the First Amendment is the same in every state. I recommend that you also look to the First Amendment of the Constitution. It reads, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." I would like to further drive in the point by quoting the Treaty of Tripoli, ratified by the Senate in 1796 and signed by John Adams in 1797. This was a treaty to prevent Muslim pirates from interfering with American trade in North Africa. Article 11 states, "The government of the United States is not in any sense..." Article 11 states, "The government of the United States is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion." Now, this was signed by John Adams, a devout Christian, and he stated that that religion was above all others that had ever prevailed. Even he understood how important it was to keep Christianity out of the government, which has been a driving force for the community. There are many in this room and community, including myself, who are not allowed to have a Christian religion govern our homes and lives. This desire is protected by our Constitution. One is welcome to have their own personal belief system, they are not allowed to bring it into the community.
Barbara Pavloski, you're up next, you'll be followed by Bruce Pavloski, who'll be followed by Julie Fournette.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, well, here we are again, because we still have not got our agenda item agendized, even though the public, the majority of us, have wanted this for months. I totally support the speakers ahead of me that feel the need for this particular ordinance to protect children, and I don't care that parents, some parents, might take their children to these inappropriate shows. That does not matter. Our job, your job, is to protect all children, all children. That means we need an ordinance, obviously, or we wouldn't have had a drag show here, against the majority of the public will, the citizens of this community. So, I think, as the other speakers have said, we're very tired of you all breaking, especially the mayor, government processes that are in writing, have been for years, we're very tired of that. We expect you to uphold processes in place already and honor what the citizens want. So, I'm very happy that we had two council members, council members, remember Duvernay and Duwillis, and the third council member, try to get an ordinance or an amendment passed, and to have to see that whole thing upended last time we met in the rec center was very disheartening. It tells me that we have a dictator, the mayor, and his minions, the council. We expect you, when things go wrong, especially by the mayor, you step up, do your jobs, do the jobs we elected you to do, and don't let this happen. This is not Nazi Germany, and the mayor is not the Fuhrer. Thank you.
Bruce Pavloski, you're up next, you'll be followed by Julie Fournette, followed by Lama Hayburn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me open the discussion with you all. Last Tuesday, I was at the meeting. I was really, really disappointed, because I felt it went the wrong way based on some misguided by you, Mayor, and other council members. Two people can agendize, you can't stop it according to your ordinances. Now, if you've got an ordinance in the back pocket somewhere where we, the public, don't know about it, I like to see it, but I don't know anything about that. Also, I heard council members say parental rights. That's a loose definition. What are parental rights? Our rights are to protect our kids if we're parents. That's number one. Two, First Amendment is not, does not superior to children's rights. We've heard that already. My daughter's an attorney, she knows that, most attorneys know it. So, because we have children that are five, six, seven, they can't discern right and wrong yet. It's our job as parents. So, just like we don't allow kids to go to R-rated movies, wait a minute, parental discernment is right, that parental rights, they should be able to take them to any movie they want. We don't do that. We don't do a lot of things, we don't let our kids do a lot of things. Why? They need our protection. I don't view drag shows as wrong, I view them as drag, as adult entertainment. In my younger day, I went to a couple of those. Anyway, we won't discuss that, but, so I don't think we've got the right perspective on this. First Amendment is not being violated if you allow drag shows. Nobody's saying, no drag shows. What we're saying is age restricted, just like you do in bars, just like you do for R-rated movies, nothing wrong with that. I think it was already brought up by one of our previous speakers. You passed an ordinance in 2015, tobacco, 18 to 21, where's parental rights? Did you ask them, do we want that? Maybe the parents wanted down to 16. You know, after all, you can serve in the military at 18. Anyway, just wanted to reiterate, I think that we have a lot of people, we're not the minority, by the way, and I'm not going to advocate on the religious side of this, I'm advocating on the moral aspects of this, and we have a huge part of this population, and we are a republic, and I understand that there's, but I remember as a young kid, hey, if I got more votes than somebody else, I won. If I didn't, I lost. That was just the way it is, and that's the way we're supposed to be functioning. What we're doing is allowing a very vocal minority, and that's what they are, to try to control the narrative. We're taking it back, we're letting you know we're taking it back, and we would like you council members who are not aware of what's right and wrong, and I heard that last week, we're going to come back for you too with removing you from office. There's already a movement afoot, because we're not being listened to. The people want to be listened to. We don't want to be told what's what. We're telling you, you work for us. Thank you.
Julie Fournette, you're up next, followed by Lama Hayburn, followed by George Lee.
Thank you, Council, for your time and attention. I know this has to get pretty grueling after a little while. First of all, I want to really thank you for not putting us in the position of having to defend against a lawsuit by passing something that you knew and had been informed, would not stand up in court. We're a small town, we don't have endless supplies of money, and the amount that has been wasted so far on all of the, you know, city's time, the clerk's time with this nonsense has already cost us tens of thousands of dollars. Thank you for trying to keep us from having to spend much, much more defending a frivolous lawsuit. I do want to say that I think the people in this room, all of them, are probably more in agreement than they realize. I think everybody in this room agrees, children should not go to sexualized shows. We all agree on that. I think there's some misconception, which was enhanced by a very misleading film shown at the last city council meeting, that a lot of people in this room still believe was shown from the drag show that was in Cottonwood. A lot of drag shows are just music, dancing, dressing up, it's a place for different kinds of families to feel accepted, where it's not so heteronormative, they can be themselves, they can be a little crazy and silly, but they're not X-rated. And there's already books on the law, laws on the books to keep kids out of X-rated shows, so there's no need, you don't have to go and make another law for it, there's already laws there, and if anybody is taking a child to an X-rated show, I stand right beside you, I think that should be stopped. But that's not what's happening here. What they're doing is they're specifically singling out drag, because it's different, and they aren't fitting in the God-given heteronormative family box that they want everybody to fit into. Somebody brought up the number of suicides that happen with LGBTQ youth, that's true, and it's completely brought on by people like the speaker, who makes these kids feel like the person that they were born to be is wrong, and there's something wrong with them. I think if your argument is so weak that you have to mislead people with misleading films, that's a really weak argument. Put something up there that really matters. And I have to say that I'm extremely offended by a certain council member smirking every time somebody talks about the misleading film that was brought up, because that film didn't have anything to do with the drag show that took place here, and it doesn't have anything to do with drag in general. You found some very pornographic shows, and you thought that would mislead everybody into getting riled up, and you're right, it did, it did a good job. Somebody brought up that kids can't go to R-rated movies, that's not true. You can go with your parents' permission to an R-rated movie. You can't go to an X-rated movie, that's illegal. But if I want to bring my 10-year-old to an R-rated movie, actually, when I was 11, my mom took six of us kids, and we saw Mash, it was R-rated. Thank you.
Lama Hayburn, I'm sorry if I'm getting your name wrong, followed by George Lee, followed by Danielle Glick.
I wanted to thank the Council for voting not to move forward with the unconstitutional city ordinance that would legalize discrimination and waste even more taxpayer dollars through lawsuits. Last week, an extremely inappropriate video was shown to those present. Those presenting this video claimed that it was from the April 8th drag show in Cottonwood, when it was actually from an adult-only performance in Texas in 2022. This kind of deliberate misrepresentation is disgusting and inappropriate, and that video should never have been shown in a public setting where children could be present. Shame on those who lie in order to push through their agenda. As someone who was actually at the April 8th drag show, I can tell you, it was entirely G-rated. It was people dressing up in costumes and singing, which is what drag is. I would note, in fact, that the Thunder Valley Rally has scantily clad women in front of children, and that's considered unacceptable, but a man in a dress is inherently worse? Why? We're not the ones sexualizing things, you are. What is it about a man dressing up that makes your mind go straight to your crotch? I would recommend seeking help for that issue. Again, I'd like to thank the Council for upholding the Constitution by voting against the anti-LGBTQ ordinance.
George Lee, you're up next. Folks, please, it is disruptive, if you, thumbs up, thumbs down, that's great, but let's, let's keep it civil here. George Lee, you're up next. Danielle, I believe it's Glick, and then AJ Butts, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Again, I want to applaud the four members of the Council that did not let that agenda item go forward. As this has been mentioned, I think virtually everyone in this room wants to protect children. What I'm not hearing is any concern from the vocal group here in majority that think that the sexualizing of children is brought on by drag shows, by, although not mentioned here, reading material, which they feel like they have to ban in libraries. People's sexuality comes fairly naturally, we have all kinds of first-person accounts, there are a lot of people here who know people who are, if you are going to go in a direction of questioning what your assigned role or gender is, or you're not sure, it isn't because you're going to go to a drag show, it's because it's happening within you. But it's much easier to divide us, to use fear, intimidation, and anger. Emotion is the strongest way of mobilizing people, and unfortunately, in this country today, it is so widespread, and I am, I grieve for our community, for you who have to be subjected to personal insults and assaults. I grieve for the children who have questions about their own sexuality, who are afraid to even be able to talk to it, because in communities, it is looked down as if there's something wrong with them, that they're not normal. And again, I want to say and reaffirm the misleading use of the higher suicide rate by transgender children, yes, it is terrible, but it's not because they have been sexualized, it's because they have been demonized, because they are most likely to be assaulted, and it is a shame. And I wish that we, as a community, could work together to solve problems of bullying, problems that have divided us, because there's a lot that we agree upon. Now, one thing that I do want to say, because of the presentation earlier on the slide here, here we are with all of this people and emotion about drag shows, when the environment is being polluted, and what's going to hurt children more? Thank you.
Okay. Danielle Glick? Oh, I'm sorry, sure, okay. And then AJ Butts, you're up next, you'll be followed by Shawna Martin, and who will be followed by Deborah Segland, I believe.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. This is only my second time speaking in front of council, but I have attended a few meetings, one of which was last week, where I was very offended by the video that was shown before me. Luckily, there were not any kids that I'm aware of in the audience for that, but I think that it's very interesting that we have come to countless meetings talking about protecting the children when that was displayed, where children could have been present. I'm a parent, I, you know, my kid has expressed interest in coming to these meetings, I've asked him, you know, or told him that it's not appropriate, and that's one of the reasons why. I feel that as a parent, we have, we have rights. I know that there's a law on the books already for Arizona parental rights, and we should be able to, in our best judgment, decide what is appropriate for our children and what is not, without the government control or oversight. I also feel that it is not up to any one group to tell another group how they should live, or how they should raise their children. I think that it is a slippery slope that opens up the possibility for anybody to just decide, well, this is what we want you to do, so this is what we're doing now. And I just want to thank Council for choosing not to move forward with drafting the ordinance. If it does, then we will still be here.
Okay. Shawna Martin, you're up next, you'll be followed by Deborah Segland, I believe, followed by Andy Andrews. Hello.
Last week's work session was disappointing and, quite frankly, disgusting. Grown men were standing on chairs and screaming. Members of the community were yelling at council that they are going to hell. Neighbors hurled insults and cuss words at attendees. Interestingly enough, it wasn't the devilish drag queens engaging in this behavior, no, it was the representatives of the children and Christ that were behaving this way. In order to make town meetings a safe space for all interested
Deborah Segland, I see that you don't want to speak. Okay, and then we have Andy Andrews up next, you'll be followed by, excuse me, Alec Gradigen, followed by Diane Lenz.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Andy Andrews, and I'm here in opposition to the drag shows and allowing kids to enter into these things. I've heard a lot of stuff, some of it's been pretty outlandish. The last speaker was outlandish in a couple of areas that just weren't quite right, and you could verify that yourself through the video. But what I do want to say is, it's wrong, and the Bible tells us it's wrong in numerous places. It says, "Women that dress like men, men that dress like women," is an abomination. If you don't believe me, if you don't want to believe me standing here, you can read it for yourself, the word is true. But I have a suggestion and a question for all of you here tonight. At some point in time, we're all going to die. We don't know exactly when, and when we die, we're going to stand before the great Judge, Jesus Christ, and he's going to ask, "What have you done?" And your worth will be weighed. Where do you stand? Look in the mirror and ask that. You know yourself that this is wrong. If you've ever been to a church, it's not all damnation. If you've ever been to a church, if you call yourself a Christian, if you have ever read the Bible, you know this is wrong. Please, self-reflect. That's my ask to you all. Thank you.
Okay. Alec Gradigen, you're up next, followed by Diane Lenz, followed by Judy Cohen.
Wow. I came here to talk about one thing, but I learned a long time ago, I've been around a long time, that I learn more by listening than talking, and listening to all these people. I've learned a lot of things, and I'd like to ask you all you can answer. How many of you have experienced childhood? Nobody, no nods, no smiles, God, what a group. It's a confusing time. It's a confusing time, and not all of us are blessed with good parents. We have good people and bad people. You know, birth happens, and it doesn't happen because we have good or bad parents. It's a thing of nature, biological, and here comes this child. And as a society, we have an obligation to protect children. I'm not sure what that means. You're an attorney, and you know the foundation of our laws precedent, period. And there's a lot of precedent on the books that, yes, we do have laws to protect children. We don't need to argue that. Not only do we need to argue it, it's not your job to argue it. That's why we have judges and courts. What disturbs me about this council is you people don't seem to understand that our congress, every state legislature, legislator, our town councils, and our city councils in this entire country are a representative form of government. Your job, your number one job, you have many, represent us. And us are the citizens, your customers. Who are they? About a year, year and a half ago, this city published a wonderful book that chose a lot of things, and in there, they have the demographics by pop, by age of who's the majority in this town. Have you read it? It'd be kind of like being a doctor and not reading a medical book. The majority of this town are seniors. And we have a different way of thinking, and the reason is, we've been around longer than you have, so we've learned more. The other thing is, in fact, I'm a little bit surprised by this. I don't think I've ever seen so many denominations of churches for per capita as we have in Cottonwood. Now, what does that tell me? The majority of the people are seniors, and the majority of people are based on faith, not rocket science, guys. Your customers. A good businessman finds out what his customers' needs and wants are. That's how he sees the business. Why don't you guys put a sign up there above the door that says, "We are here to serve the citizens of Cottonwood," period? Not complicated.
Mr. Gradigen, you're...
Do you have a sign from the ads?
No. Mr. Gradigen, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Diane Lenz, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Judy Cohen, followed by Connie Fisher.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Diane Lenz here. I would like to just offer my thanks to the council for voting last week against the ordinance. That would have banned family participation in Verde Valley events, in Verde Valley community events, our community. I'd like to encourage the council to continue its scrutiny of potential local government actions to ensure compliance with the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and basic decency. So, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Okay, Judy Cohen, you're up next. You'll be followed by Connie Fisher, who will be followed by Rachel Corpenney, perhaps?
I'm Judy Cohen.
I got that one right.
Good evening to the council. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Judy Cohen. I have lived here for 45 years and looked at the history and what goes on. I know that Main Stage worked very hard to have a drag show at their main stage and have had drag shows there. There was no protest at that time because it's a bar, because they're carded, and if they let minors in, it's an offense. No problem. We do have 37 churches in Cottonwood, and we also have a population of 12,000 people. My concern is the people here tonight, how many are from Cottonwood, and how many care about what happens in Cottonwood but not their own residents of where they live? Let's have some Cottonwood residents come in only to fight the problem that we are undergoing. Yes, parents can have, at Main Stage, so they're carded, and my concern is also that it was a city building. I'm in opposition. When, when I, when I would go to my church, I wouldn't want to see a drag show. I certainly wouldn't. And I wouldn't think that anyone here that would go to a drag show would want a sermon from the Bible on homosexuality, because it is an abhorrence to God. And let us not forget that God has created all of us. And let's not forget our friend Penny Smith, who passed away two years ago, who was very a strong instigator in getting the drag show here in, at Main Stage. I wish Penny, I loved her very dearly, but I wish she could come back from her death and let us know the decisions that she made, that she stood on, and where now God stands with her. I would like to know that. So, thank you very much for your time.
Connie Fisher, you're up next. You'll be followed by Rachel Corpenney. Connie Fisher, are you with us? Rachel, are you with us? I know I'm getting your name wrong. Debbie Joseph, are you with us? All right. I will then close the floor to the public, and we will get on with business. Thank you. Council, do we need a five-minute break, or are we good? Okay. We'll take a quick five-minute break, let the room clear out, and come back to our regular meeting. We're back. Next up is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So, there's four items this evening. First up is new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application submitted by Daniel Edward Cohen, agent for BB's Italian Kitchen located 301 West State Route 89A. Item two is resolution number 3186, agreement with Mingus Union High School for School Resource Officer. Resolution number 3188, approving a waiver of procurement policy for the purchase of a bucket truck from Commerce Truck Equipment Sales LLC in an amount not to exceed $188,515. Resolution number 3189, approval for the use of the Cooperative Agreement of the City of Goodyear Contract with Core &amp; Main LP for the purchase and installation of new automated Reed water meters in an amount not to exceed $796,236.42. Is there an item a council member or citizen would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? All right. All motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. May I make the motion, and Councilmember Carrat, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's approved. Let's have our clerk read resolutions number 3186, 3188, and 3189 by title only, please.
Resolution number 3186, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Mingus Union High School District Number Four for the services of a school resource officer to be provided by the Cottonwood Police Department. Resolution number 3188, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving a waiver of procurement policy for the purchase of a bucket truck from Commerce Truck Equipment Sales LLC in an amount not to exceed $188,515. And resolution number 3189, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, authorizing a cooperative use purchase agreement for the purchase of automated Reed water meters with Core &amp; Main LP, a Florida limited partnership, in amount not to exceed $796,236.42.
Okay. Thank you. All right. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. There's two items this evening. First is resolution number 3194, authorizing event waivers, allowing alcohol consumption and glass containers in a city park during Thunder Valley Rally on September 15th and 16th, 2023.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm going to just introduce the item to start with, and Mr. Teal, our Parks and Rec Director, will be conducting the presentation. But I wanted to just, you know, although the subject is Thunder Valley Rally, it's a special authorizations and waivers to allow alcohol consumption, consumption and glass containers. I thought it would be helpful and important for Mr. Teal to provide a little bit of background and some overview of the event itself, and to provide some context, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Teal.
Great. Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you, Scotty. So, as Mr. Douglas had said, I'm here tonight to ask council for a couple of waivers for Thunder Valley Rally. That's primarily housekeeping items, but we always want to give council that opportunity to weigh in and ask questions on the program as well, and kind of a stopping point for us to check in and make sure everything's going the direction everybody would like. So, with that, I've got a brief presentation. It's going to have a timeline of kind of what we do for this program throughout the year, give us some expenses last year versus what we expect this year, and then look at our revenue breakout from last year and what we expect this year as well. And if there's any questions from council at any point in time, feel free to stop me, or if you'd like to save those till the end, whatever works best for council. There we go. Okay. So, the first one here, this is just our postcard. We send this out every year for marketing, and this just highlights the bands that we're bringing to Cottonwood this year for this music and motorcycle festival. So, on Friday night, we have Stephen Pearson, the voice of Rat, and then on Saturday night, we have Quiet Riot. That's September 15th and 16th. Every year for Thunder Valley Rally, and a lot of our council members who've been here long-term have probably heard this before, but some of our newer council members, this might be a first for you. This program is really a year-long program for Parks and Recreation. We start our planning process in January, and you can see that's when we start developing our budget. That's when we look at our layout, what worked last year, what do we want to do this year? What's the scale and scope we're looking at? And then what are we doing to recruit our sponsors? Obviously, we reach out to previous-year sponsors, but is there anybody new that we think we need to go out and touch base with and see if we can't get them on our team? Then March, that's really when we start our major procurement process. So, that's when I start working with Jeff Cook and Lisa and our procurement team to make sure that we're doing those procurement processes correctly. That's getting our staging, getting our light and sound, getting the entertainment, going through all of our contracts, and just making sure that the city's in best position we can be in to put on an event like this. During April, that's really when we kick off our marketing. So, from April on is really the meat of what we're doing. In April, we go to Arizona Bike Week, and that really dictates our marketing schedule. That's when we try to have all of our... That's when we try to have all of our major entertainment booked by, so we can get that out to the public, as it's the largest motorcycle event in the state. It's a good marketing opportunity for us, so April's always our deadline to get those previous items done. Then May, that's when we're soliciting for all of our other services. So this is when we're looking at security, this is when we're looking at our generators, our porta-potties, and all those items that go onto the operational side of putting on large-scale events like this. June through September is when really we're finalizing all those details and fine-tuning everything. That's when we come to council, make sure we're getting the council blessing to move forward on our permits and our programs. That's when we start doing our temporary use permit. So this morning, I just had our meeting with community development to go through our temporary use permit, special event permitting process. County health approvals, making sure we're touching base with them on our food vendors, and all those legal requirement steps we need to do to put ourselves in the best position to have a successful event. That's kind of the layout of what we do throughout the year. As you can see, these are our expense breakdowns for last year, and the numbers on the left, council, you may recognize from our follow-up report that we provide to council in November. So last year, we spent about $156,500, and you can see that broken out there on the left. The right side is currently what we're expecting those numbers to come in at. So I can tell you, our productions, that's already done. Our musical entertainment, that may flex just a little bit, a couple hundred dollars here or there, as we finalize our support entertainment. And then the generators, that's already done, that's out to bid. Our promotion is really our marketing, so that number, it probably will not exceed $10,000 on the Thunder Valley Rally line item, but it may come in less if we don't find appropriate opportunities for us to get our names out there. I can tell you right now, on my Thunder Valley Rally line item budget, a month out from the event, we're nowhere near $10,000, so I'd expect that that cost will come in a little bit lower than what I expected there. Our fencing, green rooms, restrooms, and trash, that number's going to float just a little bit based on what we do, finalizing our green rooms and our VIP area with our local vendor here with Verve, Verde Valley Events Rental. And then the merchandise, we're in the process of doing all of our shirt orders and things like that, so we're looking at reducing some of the things that we had access of last year. So I expect that $5,000 to be pretty close to the mark of what we're doing. And then our miscellaneous, we just jumped that because every year, there seems like something we forgot that we need to make sure we're doing. So that's our expense breakdown. You can see it's less than a $2,000 additional expense from last year of what we project to do, and the major points of these are already covered right now. So I feel pretty close that that number's going to be a realistic number for us.
Jack, quick question. On the fencing restrooms, that's gone up significantly. Is that just cost of living or cost of whatever?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Wilden. So that is, last year, I did not include the green rooms in that line item. This year, I'm including the green rooms in that line item, so you'll see that in there rather than in, I don't know where I stuck it last year, productions, probably somewhere in there. So this year, I just felt it aligned better with how I was trying to budget in that operations side.
Jack, with the fencing, does that also, I know you're going to get to the alcohol, but I'm assuming some of that, if the way you're planning, you'll be fencing like for a beer garden type of thing?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Duvernay. So we do temporary fencing around our entire perimeter of the park where our liquor license is going to be, and then we do six-foot panel gates across the roadway, so that way we can still have emergency medical access if something were to happen. We have that entryway to and from to allow emergency vehicles in. And correct, I will get to that here in a second. And then this next page is really just our revenue breakdown. So you can see last year, those were all the actual revenues that this event generated from last year. My projections on the right are just that, projections. The majority of these numbers, I feel very confident with, so our cash sponsorship is already cash that we've got. Maybe not received all of it, but we've invoiced for all of that. So those individuals are liable to pay the city for that $32,500. The rest of those, obviously, the event has to take place to be able to reach those numbers. So our vendor fees are coming in a little bit lower than where we were this time last year. We expect that to pick up a little bit, but you'll see that that's kind of why the ticket pre-sale and vendor fees are down a little bit. We expect our vendor numbers to dip just slightly based on the responses we've got from people who I know aren't coming. A lot of these numbers, I really try to under-project what I feel they are, because like Kirsten says, it's our job to make sure that we aren't overstating what we think is achievable. So really, the two big things that you'll see will increase our revenues are our ticket gate and our bar sales, and those two really go hand in hand, and it's one of the things I'll be talking about with our liquor license. So the more people we get to the event, the more alcohol you'll sell at that park, is the general idea. So if we reach 3,000 tickets sold, that'll get us $75,000 in revenue at the $25 per ticket. And then that increase there would reasonably offset, we'd have about 600 more tickets sold than what we did last year. I think that's more than enough to cover the increase in our bar sales that I've projected up there. Now, keep in mind, if we don't reach those ticketing sales numbers, that alcohol number's likely to drop as well, but you can see the difference between our expenses at 157 and our projected revenues at 186 allow us some room to have those instances come up. On the merchandise, we expect to be just shy of where we were last year. Our ATM fees, again, we expect to be right around the same thing. That's always a little bit different. The more people get used to us selling tickets online and not having wristbands that you buy at the door, we want people to buy them in advance. It gives us the cash flow to be able to do the event. That also hurts people not pulling money out of the ATMs that we get a percentage fee for every time we do it. And then our miscellaneous is, we're going to have shuttles again. If our drivers who are city employees get tipped, they obviously can't keep those tips. We just add that to Thunder Valley Rally as additional revenue, and that's usually where that number comes from. And then right now, we have currently $24,000 in in-cash sponsorship. That's not them donating money to us or giving us money, it's donating product. So like my light towers, that's a $5,000 bill easily, and they donate that product to us as a sponsor of the event. So I don't cast it as cash flow, but I want to make sure that people get recognition for the sponsorships they do give the event. So then what I'm here asking for council tonight is for these two things here. We'd like to serve alcohol at this event. As you can see, it's one of our major revenue streams for this event, and without it, it'd be a struggle to reach our cost recovery measures that we need. So we're asking council tonight for a waiver of the alcohol in the parks to allow us to sell alcohol at there. We do have a state liquor license permit that we're required to get, and with that, there's strict rules we have to follow. So you have to clearly designate where that serving area will be, and you have to state where your security is going to be and how you're going to handle and enforce all of those state-required liquor laws. So as I mentioned earlier with Councilmember Duvernay, we block off that entire park for the event. Within that area, the entire park area backed by the Ramadas is fenced off with temporary fencing and six-foot panel fencing. That creates the designated spot for us to allow and serve alcohol in that space. We contract with a professional bar company that's Special Events, no, not Special Events, Events Plus Inc., and they run and operate all of our bars, so it's not city staff having to do this. You have trained individuals who know how to card people, who know how to check for over-intoxication, and those items, handling that in our behalf. And then we have security guards stationed not only at the entry and exit gate, but all throughout the area with our Cottonwood Police Department. We're working with PANT, Partners Against Alcoholic Trafficking. We'll have the Arizona Rangers there. No shortage of security to make sure things are going well on that end. And then the last thing we want to do is ask for that glass waiver in the parks. Me being the Parks and Recreation guy, I'll be the first one to tell you, I don't like glass in parks. But as the heart of Arizona's wine country, we also want to move that forward, and we've always included Arizona wine when we do there, all of our wineries bottle in bottles. So to be able to do that, we have to have that glass waiver. It's only the bar companies who ever handle that. The public never gets glass. They'll be given plastic cups, and the glass is discarded in the recycling bins we have there on site. We've never had an issue with it in the past. I don't have reason to believe we'd have an issue with it this year. But again, that's at council's discretion. And with that, that wraps my presentation, and I'd be open for any questions council may have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teal. I'd like to just add just a little bit more. We do have several staff members here. If there are specific questions regarding Thunder Valley Rally, this is my first time going through the event as well. I'd like to just mention that our Finance Director and Acting Police Chief and Fire Chief are here to answer any other questions regarding security and possible fiscal questions as well. The last thing I'd like to mention is the economic driver that this really is for our community from what I have learned. And the nice thing is, is that I think that we're going to have some additional information and data that we're going to be able to share with the council following this event because of a new subscription service that we have that allows us to start tracking some of the spending and the activity that's in the area, given events that come into the area. It's not just this event, it's for others that come to the area as well, so we can measure what the activity is on just any normal weekend, and then we can actually take a look at, how does that change when we have an event like Thunder Valley Rally or other events that we have in the city? So, thank you.
Great, that's excellent. Any questions for staff?
Of course I do.
Oh, go right ahead.
Are you going to have the wrestling thing again, or boxing, or whatever it was last year?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilden, no, that's not in the plans currently.
Are you still going to go?
I've never heard of these bands, but it's just because.
All right, any other questions? Okay, well, like you said, it is housekeeping, but I appreciate the presentation just to let newer members kind of know the program over the years and what to expect. So I'm ready for motion if anyone's willing to make one.
I got it. I move to approve Resolution Number 3194 to allow alcohol consumption and glass containers at Riverfront Park during the 2023 Thunder Valley Rally, notwithstanding any city rule, regulation, or policy to the contrary.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Narin made the motion, Councilmember Carratt seconded it. Let's get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeWillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Duvernay?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Palasari?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilden?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And the motion carries?
Great, let's have you re-Resolution 3194 by title only, please.
Resolution Number 3194, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona authorizing event waivers allowing alcohol consumption and glass containers in a city park during Thunder Valley Rally on September 15th and 16th, 2023.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Okay, next and last is discussion of 2023 League of Arizona Cities and Towns resolutions and provide input to Mayor Olensky as the council's representative on the League's Resolution Committee. Ms. Winkler, did you want to kick this off, or would you like me to?
Well, what I understand we're doing here, these are resolutions that the mayor's going to be asked to vote on on behalf of Cottonwood at a meeting that is held as part of the League's annual conference at the end of August. And these resolutions, as I understand it, will guide the League's activities at the legislature in the coming year. So it's basically direction to the League on, these are things that we would like you to pursue through the legislature.
Yep, that's right, and they're normally not so controversial as what we have before, so it'd really be great to get some council direction on this so I can represent council's wishes.
Hasn't, if I remember correctly, in the past, and Tammy would probably know, that whoever was there from council, or even Ron, was able to vote. Is that right?
Yeah, they prefer a mayor or a duly-appointed council member to be there. So I haven't attended the League Conference in a number of years, but I am attending this year, so more than happy to convey council's direction on this.
I just want to say, I did attend last year as the Vice Mayor, and I did attend that, and I did the voting.
Yeah, I did the year before. I'm way okay with that, and it's kind of a casual atmosphere, but maybe not this year as much because of the items, but I'm fine with that.
Okay. So council, did you want to kind of go down the list and let me know, you know, yes, no on these items? We can just start with BFED 2, the Resolution to pursue legislation to allow cities and towns to authorize a temporary property reclassification for redevelopment projects that create new housing units. Any kind of discussion or direction around that particular item?
Happy to go on that one.
Everyone's good on it? Okay, why am I looking at you? How do you feel? All right. I kind of see it as a, I had a question actually about the gift clause, frankly, on this one. I know it seems like bigger cities tend to wheel and deal a little bit more with developers than we do up here. How are they going to get around gift clause issues on that one? It seems to me like it's a bit of a giveaway.
Could you give me a little bit tougher question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding, just kidding. I don't know how they will get around it. I am guessing, though, that the League is very well-versed in the gift clause. And so whatever legislation, and this is just to allow like a policy direction to them, so it's not, we don't actually have the proposed legislation that they might push. So it's kind of hard for me to answer that. That's a non-answer answer to your question. I apologize.
All right, well, it sounds like council would like yes on this one. Yeah, okay. BFED 3, amend statute to remove the petition requirement necessary to form municipal improvement districts. This one's presented by Camp Verde. Yeah, so it's amend statute to remove the petition requirement necessary to form municipal improvement districts. So I think there was a stat, a bill that was put in law in 2016, I think, that made it more difficult for communities to enact a community improvement districts, which is helpful in infrastructure and other things as a way to finance.
What would be an example here that defines that?
Well, municipal improvement district, for example, let's just say the folks out in the Verde Villages wise up and wanted to become annexed, then they would perhaps want to consider a municipal improvement district to fund a sewer system out there, which they don't have, to get them off septic tanks to help preserve the Verde River, just as an example. So they would need, one mechanism to finance that would be a municipal improvement district.
So this is just to make it easier, right?
I believe, am I saying this all correctly?
On annexation, I don't know about annexation. When I think of a municipal utilities district, Councilwoman Duvernay, typically they're formed for, to provide services where services are not available. You know, like in-city limit, services are not available. So these are usually outside of city limits, and it would be for like wastewater, fire, is fire service is a typical example. And it requires that property owners, a certain number of property owners, sign off on a petition, and then it has to go to a vote, like a formal balloted vote, to form the district.
But not in the annexation route?
I shouldn't have brought up annexation. I just did that because I think if, that is one way it could apply in Cottonwood in that if we were to annex the Verde Villages, they don't have those, they don't have the infrastructure out there for sewer, and so one financing mechanism for that would be to do an improvement district to put in that infrastructure.
But you're saying they would not need a petition?
Currently, they would.
Yeah, but this would say...
Correct, correct. If I, yeah, that's correct. So I think Camp Verde's had issues with it, and I don't know the specifics in Camp Verde, but I think this has been an impediment to them being able to do improvement districts to better provide utilities in their community. And so if they could change the law to remove that petition requirement, it would be helpful. And it says in the information that folks would still have the opportunity to say, yes, I don't want to be in, or I do want to be in this improvement district. So I don't think it's removing any rights of property owners. It's just a tweak to the law to make it a little bit easier.
I'd like to go back to the annexation.
Sure.
Because it is huge.
Yeah.
If they don't need a petition, and the whole Verde Villages wants to come in, so who, if they want to do sewers, whatever, they do not need a petition, so how many, who gets to decide that then?
So the property owners within the proposed district are the ones that vote whether or not to form the district. Does that answer the question?
I guess, I mean...
And I'm not the expert on this law, so...
Because if we're referring to, for instance, sewage, you've got 100 property owners, you don't need a petition, so 50 people want sewer and the other 50 don't. If you don't require a petition, where are you going to get your majority rules there?
Right, so the petition, as I understand it, would be just to present the measure to the property owners. So the measure would, so like, for example, you would, you know, the, a few people could propose it, not a certain percentage of the property owners, but you would still then have the property owners within the proposed district that would have to vote to approve it.
It would just be to propose it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm seeing heads nod affirmatively. All right, seeing heads, not affirmative? Yes, yes, okay. All right. And then GAHRE3, amend statute to allow for the collection of 10% more than the minimum signature threshold for local candidates. It's being presented by Scottsdale.
Did you read that again?
Sure. Amend statute to allow for the collection of 10% more than the minimum signature threshold for local candidates.
So they would have to have 10% more?
It would allow for the collection of 10% more than the minimum. And it references something that I don't think we...
We use equal.
Yeah, we don't use equal, so I think this is...
Unless they change it.
Unless they change it, which would be great, but I don't think we use that up here. It's an online mechanism to sign, which we don't do in our local elections.
Yeah, well, actually, I think you would just see, you know, the state legislature from the county. Yeah, you could use mistake.
But not for local, so it kind of doesn't apply to us, but...
Be nice if it did.
Nice if it did, yeah.
So it's a moot question.
Yeah, it's moot to me.
I mean, it wouldn't be a yea or nay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just go with the flow if, you know, when you're there.
I would say it doesn't apply to us, so I kind of wouldn't like go yea or nay. I mean, if it doesn't apply to us.
Well, right.
Because our yea could be...
Exactly.
Do you want me just to keep my mouth shut during this?
I don't want to.
I don't know, I don't think I can abstain necessarily, I don't, I don't know.
Vulture conscience on that.
All right, I will, I'll figure it out when I get down there, I guess. All right.
They'll let us in, then we'll let it go there.
All right. Okay, next. NSQL1, enable the League to support legislative resolutions to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment. This is from Tempe. This one was a little confusing to me, I don't totally understand how the League isn't able to represent us on issues of Equal Rights Amendments. I don't know how that, this one was...
So what I understand this is asking for is, it sounds as though, so the Equal Rights Amendment has not been ratified by Arizona, and it sounds like maybe somebody is planning to try to, you know, get Arizona to ratify it, and so the League wants to be able to weigh in in support of ratifying it, and that's what I think this is.
Okay.
Equal rights in what realm?
What?
I said, equal rights in what realm are they talking? I mean, you've got marriage, you've got civil, you know, it's employment, you've got a whole lot of things.
Well, it states here that the relevance to this municipal policy would be to demonstrate to residents that municipalities want to ensure equality under the law regardless of sex. Does that help you at all?
Yeah.
I mean, I would like the League to be able to represent us. I think they do a good job otherwise.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, am I hearing a yes then on this? Okay. NSQL3, allow municipalities to set caps on the total number of short-term rentals in their community. The next three are really kind of linked, and these are all pushed by Scottsdale, which finally, when it becomes Scottsdale's problem, they pay attention, because Sedona's been pushing this for years. But allow municipalities to set caps on the total number of short-term rentals in their community, how do we all feel about that?
We would set our caps then.
We, yeah, if they would allow us, which they currently don't, then we would set caps.
I mean, yea or nay. For further legislation to regulate the short-term rentals.
You approve of, okay, I'm sorry, and what did you say, council member?
Then on enforcing that.
Well, I think it would be up to the municipality how they enforce it.
Because we have that tax that we're supposed to collect from them, and they'd have to apply to get to register, so that's, I think, we would.
Yeah, we have now a registry of short-term rentals. They have to get a business license, TPT license, so we know who's out there. Well, we hope we know who else is out there. So how we would regulate it, I guess, would be burdensome, but I'm sure we could figure out a way to do it.
Well, all of the next three say allow, so we don't have to do any of these. It just allows us to.
So I do have a little bit of background on this one, just because I've worked on this issue. So we have state statutes that really restrict the ability of municipalities to do anything in this realm, and so the League, I think, is interested in helping push for municipalities to have more ability to regulate what goes on with short-term rentals in their own communities.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're probably going to be yes on all three of those. Yeah, I don't think it affects us as much as Sedona, but it'd still be nice.
But it could.
It could.
It could, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah, and it ties into the whole local control issue, which would be nice. All right, last, amend state statute to allow cities and towns to use body scanning machines in jails and holding facilities. Which I guess currently, we're not allowed to do. It's up to the county, is that what it said in here?
When you go, even, even here, when we go to our...
Here, they go state county, but in other cities that have larger holding areas where they're kept at PD overnight, or...
Their holding facility overnight, that would give them the ability to scan for a dog.
That's, that's a scan, like at the airport, right? Okay.
What is it we have now? Do you know, Jenny, what we have now?
Well, we don't have anything here.
At our court?
We have, you walk through a metal detector at court, here.
Here, do you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you supposed to write that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Palisari is saying, I don't understand all of this, can we table it? I would like to research the ramifications.
Of body scan?
Of which one, Councilmember Palisari?
Hold on, I gotta get off mute. I'm actually having a difficult time understanding all, everything we've gone over so far, and if I'm the only one, so be it, but I just, it sounds, it just sounds like everybody else is having a hard time getting a full grasp of what the ramifications could be.
On the body scan thing, I don't really know what.
Yeah, which, which one?
I think he means on all, are you, Mr. Palisari, you're talking about each and every resolution item that we're discussing?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And you could be getting one of the, so I apologize.
That's all right, I mean, there was a, in the packet, you know, the kind of explanation behind it all, but I can understand it's, it can be confusing, and a lot of it doesn't apply, a lot of it's a big city problem, not so much out here in rural.
It's not like we're changing the law.
Go ahead, okay, go ahead, proceed.
Okay.
Are we allowed to ask about the body scanning to the commander?
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Commander Dallman, you're acting chief of police right now. I have a little bit of experience with this, so we don't see it much up here, but when you get down to the Phoenix metropolitan area, you have places like Glendale and Phoenix who have their own municipal court system where they keep people overnight and such. So it's, it's not a temporary holding facility as much as it's a, some people can stay for three, four, or five days in there. And with that, because of security concerns, they would like the ability to be able to do body scans. Body scan is basically the same thing you do in an X-ray, or I'm sorry, at an airport, where they do the full body scan, and they can see anything that may be contraband weapons and such that you're bringing into facilities, and they need that to keep the discipline of their facilities up. Right now, they currently don't have the ability to do that. We don't have that need. We don't keep people for more than a couple hours typically, and we get them to the county jail, and our county jail has a body scanner. So even if we held somebody here and we needed it, we could just go to the county jail and ask them to do it, and they would, but for the most part, the county does it for us.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense, for safety reasons, absolutely.
Okay, so I think we're yes on this then? Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and then time is kind of of the essence here, because I've got to run down at the end of this month, so we wouldn't be able to agendize it before I go down. So I have my direction, and appreciate it, council.
Yes.
All right, so then we, I don't think we need to vote on that. Do you want us to vote on that?
I, you do not need to vote on that. This was really just for discussion and for you to get some direction from your council.
Okay, great. All right, then I'll motion to pay the claims and adjustments for August 15th, 2023.
Second.
All right, may or may the motion, Councilmember Karat, seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.